I'll call the Financial Law Subcommittee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019. And the first item on the agenda this evening, a student activity request from Taunton High School in the amount of $17,570.51.
I move approval. I note that most of them are related either to proms or orientation.
Beginning of the year. Second.
Motion has been made in second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. We have a use of facility report attached.
Receiving, placed, or filed.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. And finally, oh, not finally, but next we have bills payable in the amount of $486,418.59.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed this warrant and everything is in order. Just basically the same thing we see every week. There's no, I don't see any outstanding or any, anything odd on this. So I'll move approval that we pay the warrant in the amount of $486,418.59.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Finally, we have a facilities update.
Okay. Thank you.
Moynihan, do you want to take over?
I will be happy to. Just to give you an update, that our tennis courts at the Oakland complex have been completed. They are up and ready to go. People are already using it. The nets are up, so ready for more and more of the community to use the Oakland complex. Bennett Playground, the backwatered items should have been returned by today. We are hoping to have the poured rubber down on October 7th. It takes about four days, so, at the most. So we are hoping that kids will be able to play on the playground no later than October 14th. So that's just around the corner. The high school field, the field and track, we have, myself and Mr. Otto Viannelli have contacted NERSA, who has, is putting together a proposal to have a, to remove the turf and to replace it, and also to resurface the track. So we'll be looking forward to that in the upcoming weeks.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sousa.
Thank you. Did you say that you're going to, you're looking for the proposal? You're getting the specs together?
Correct. Exactly. And then we'll be going out to bid.
Thank you.
So, and at that time, I'll be, we'll follow proper, proper channels that we have in the past, and we'll be following up with the school committee as well.
Could you, is that going to, Mr. Cabral, is that going to come to us just to look at what the specs and what the scope of it is, just so, not because, just to make, just so we can review it to make sure that, you know, that maybe we want to go to a bigger scope of the project, or whatever it may be?
Actually, yes.
Or are we just going to, just going to send it out for bid?
No, that's a great question. So I've asked, when I spoke with Mrs. Moynihan and Mr. Otto Viannelli, we're asking Austin Nesra to put together a proposal to, for the, to resurface the turf field, the football stadium, and also do the track, and then also possible expansion to what, to include, once we know the costs associated with the estimates, a practice field along William Street?
Yep.
And potentially some additional upgrades on the campus as well. So I'd like to have a comprehensive plan, and then we can, we can figure out, or we can plan accordingly.
We can pick and choose by the, but pick and choose by the cost. I think that's a great plan. As you know, as you know, both you, Ms. Moynihan, the, the complex over there is always busting at the seams for fields and busting at the seams for, for things going on over there. So it's good that we're expanding it a little bit, just to keep note of what needs to be not only refurbished, but also expanded if, if we can fit it in the budget.
And, and the plans will come to the Finance and Law Subcommittee, because obviously Austin and Nesra will have a cost attached with the proposal to design the work.
And, and there's nothing, I mean, the, the, the engineering on that field, the initial cost estimates, initial engineering, and then, and then the outcome of that turf field over at the baseball field, or the multi-use field, is just fabulous. So we stick with, we stick with a winning game.
Getting to the point, I can speak, I can speak on behalf of one field hockey player on the eighth grade team, who prefers to play on turf versus grass, just because it's just a different game when you're playing on the turf. No bumps, it's smooth, the game plays at a faster pace. So we're very fortunate to have a multi-purpose field on the baseball field, and now we need to make sure that we maintain that same level on the football field.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just to reiterate what Mr. Sousa said about the use, I think it was Wednesday of last week, there are 11 different sporting events going on after school at Taunton High School.
It's amazing.
One more item on that bid specs. I would suggest that the bid specs be broken into two parts, so that we have the reserve, the right, yeah, we've reserved the right to accept one and not accept the other, just in case, you know, money is an issue. In other words, we could do the track and the field and not do the practice fields, or vice versa, do the practice fields and not do the, just separate them.
Right.
Not, not two separate bids, but two separate proposals.
No, and those are called add alts, and that's what we'll be doing on that, when we, if, if the, if the committee chooses to go forward to, to put this out to bid. We will consider all of those as considered to be add alts.
And one more thing, do we have any kind of timeframe on when we'll get these specs? The reason I'm asking is...
Bid timing.
This is the time of year to go out to bid, so that the bids come in in January, February timeframe, and we can lock in a contract for the summer, versus going out in April, we're never going to be able to lock anybody in for the summer, because they're all going to be working.
So, so the sooner the better, I guess, is the comment. Yeah, that's a great que, that's a great comment. So we'll follow up with Nesra to see when he anticipates having the proposal for us, that we can bring it to the committee, Financing Law Committee.
And can I also just add to that? If in fact, time is a real issue, you could call for a special meeting, just so that we could meet to discuss the specs and just to get them out to bid. So rather than waiting two weeks to get them before us, there's two weeks that go by that they don't go out to bid, just call for a special meeting and...
Finance and Law, the chair, the chair can call when?
Well, we'd have to, you can call Finance and Law, but it would have to be a special meeting to approve the financing law.
That's right, for the finance.
And that way there, we could, we could possibly save two weeks of, of time.
Sure.
Because I think time is of the essence.
Yep.
From experience, you get these things out in the fall, late fall, early winter, you can get them done that summer. You stop putting them out in January, February, and you don't get them back till April, May, you're not going to get it done.
The minute I turned it back to you and you started asking the questions, was the first thing that popped in my mind, and then you said it's exactly, the timing is everything.
Anything else?
One last thing. Today is National Custodians Day, and we went ahead today and delivered lunches to all of our, our custodians in the school district. The lunches were prepared by our students in the Tiger Cafe. They did a wonderful job. Custodians were very happy and appreciated the, the lunches, and of course, this was for first shift and our second shift custodians, so all of our custodians did receive that.
Fantastic. Great gesture.
Very good. Anything else? Mr. Cabral?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Roll call, Mrs. Fagan.
Ms. Dougherty.
Present.
Mr. Sousa.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mr. DiMello.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mrs. Almeida.
Present.
The approval of minutes of 9:18.
Second.
Motion made in second. Is there any discussion here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Tonight, we have a student council representative. Her name is Aisling Campbell. She's a sophomore at Taunton High, and she's going to give her report.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. I am Aisling Campbell, representing Taunton High School, as Bella Doyle, who was unavailable to attend. I will start off with our very first advisory, which was held on Tuesday, September 24th. We started off with some icebreakers. We continued to discuss the dangers of vaping. We also watched a video on it. We have our picture days tomorrow and Friday. We are gearing up for October 16th, which is our PSATs for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. Also, on October 17th, we have our parent-teacher conferences. As for student council, we have our meetings every Thursday. Our meeting for tomorrow will discuss some of the upcoming fall events. We have our Spirit Week, along with the Homecoming Dance. We are also continuing, we are co-chairing Miles for MDA Walk with DECA, November 3rd. It will be a community event to raise money for muscular dystrophy. We are also organizing our first-ever spirit tent at this Friday's football game. It will contain a face painting for families and promoting school spirit. With that, my report is completed. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Sousa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the event on, on November the 3rd for MDA, what time is that?
I'm not sure. It's, they started planning it early, so I don't, I don't know all the details.
You'll get the information to Mr. Cabral's office.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the report.
Any other discussion here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Public input, we have Carol Sullivan, 52 Dean Street, for roadie presentation. If you could come to the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for inviting me here this evening. I'm Carol Sullivan, president of the Taunton Rotary, Rotary Club. On behalf of the Rotary Club and past President Joe Livingston, I'd like to thank the school committee for allowing us to hold our largest yearly fundraiser, Family Fun Day, on the Taunton High School grounds. The funds raised are distributed throughout the community, and we'd like to donate this check for $1,000 to the school committee to contribute toward the medical ID bracelets. So thank you again for having me here, and for allowing us to hold our event at Taunton High School. We've been doing that for the past few years, and it just works out wonderfully. We get a good turnout every year, and we raise quite a bit of money to contribute to school scholarships, high, high school seniors, to different organizations. We, my first project as my president this year, as president this year, was a backpack program, and I got a lot donated, and we distributed 80 backpacks to Taunton, the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and Matthew's Mission. So I've, I've done that a couple of times, and I really like that program, and I'd like to continue that and make it bigger every year, because we'd like to get contributions for that, because the kids always need it. So this is what we do, and I do have the check. I'd like to present it to you. Come up and, should I come up there?
Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan.
Jovi, would you like to? Jovi is one of our members.
We've got a quick question. Okay.
Why don't you stand in the center? Can you give the whole book?
Okay.
Once it comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cabral.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Kathleen Perry and School Resource Officers.
So if I may, Mrs. Almeida, I'd like to welcome Mrs. Perry to the podium, along with School Resource Officer John Peterson. We also have with us Kiara Zaya, who is the Star Prevention Coordinator, and as well as our Wellness Coordinator Brad Sigwell, who'll be presenting on the work that we are doing around vaping to build capacity in our students, and also to educate our parents of the hazards of vaping.
So great. So I'd like to actually just let John jump right in and begin this presentation. He's already presented it to Martin Middle School, and he is scheduled to present it to Freedman Middle School, as well as Parker Middle School. So I'd like to introduce John Peterson, our School Resource Officer.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'll do my best with the microphone, I'm not too used to these. So tonight, we're going to go through the vaping awareness presentation that the School Resource Officers of the Taunton Police Department have put together. We felt it was important for us to have a say in educating our students. We found that there's a lot of misinformation, there's a lot of people that don't know where to turn for information, and at times, we didn't think that some of the information out there was quite good to the kids in the format that it should. So we tried to put together a presentation that while it's aimed at the kids, we can also take an aim at parents and give them the information that they require. So with our presentation, we start off with, the most important thing is that we try to create a judgment-free zone. We realize that there may be students that vape, parents that vape, family members of those students, and the last thing we want is anybody to feel alienated during our conversation. People are here for information, for education, and if they feel attacked for that, or if they can't ask a question without some form of retribution, we're not going to have a good result. So even tonight, you know, afterwards, we can take some quick questions or discussion. Please, if you have something, feel free to, free to ask. What we try to cover is, you know, exactly what vaping is for people that aren't aware of it, why children are vaping, and what are we doing, and do we have all the facts and dangers. So basically, vaping is the inhaling of an aerosol, often called vapor, produced by e-cigarettes or other similar devices. You'll hear it called by multiple different things. The most common thing is vaping or juling. Regardless of whatever it's called, it is the exact same thing. And just for, to kind of clarify for some of the kids or parents that are unfamiliar, when they're using a vape, they don't see what actually occurs or what it produces. They only see the after effect. And I like to liken it to basically taking like a glade can in the bathroom, you know, the air freshener. When you take and you spray that in the air, you can see all the particles in the air, and they all kind of float around. Basically, that's what this machine is making, is a similar substance. It's not the exact same thing, but just for a picture of what it's doing. And what I like people to understand is, if you take that, you can watch those particles settle down, they settle onto whatever surface, and make, you know, you can leave fingerprints, or it can maybe make it sticky. These vape products are doing the same exact thing when you take these into your body. So that's just a way to picture and understand kind of the process of what's occurring here, and what we're talking about. Currently, there are over 400 brands of e-cigarettes or vapes, and over 15,000 flavors of juice flavors on the market. And the reason this is important to know is that from both the parent's perspective, they need to know that there's a wide variety of things that they may encounter and have no, have no idea what it is. And from the student's perspective, that somebody may give them something and tell them that it's not a real vape, or it's not something that's going to harm them. So it's important to recognize the different types that they may see. The more common ones are over on the right-hand side, and we have some examples. And if you notice, the items are kind of designed to look like everyday items that kids may already have in their backpacks. The one on the left, the blue one there on the right-hand picture, is, kind of looks like a highlighter. The one next to it could be a highlighter or marker case type thing. You know, the jewel is very slim, just, again, like a highlighter could fit in your pocket. And then on the left-hand side, we have ones that look more traditional, such as pipes, cigars, cigarettes. The one in the middle is a very popular one in the secondary market, and is actually more dangerous, because it has the ability to be adjusted, as far as how much power goes through it, and therefore, how much of the product you're taking into your lungs. So why do we care about vaping? Vaping was introduced in the United States, somewhere around 2006, depends what research you look at, but 2006, 2007 seems to be the year that it was really introduced. It was first created in the early 2000s over in Asia, I believe it was actually in China, as a, originally designed by doctors, a smoke and cessation device. So that's where the roots were. It was brought over to the United States, and since that point, time, it's grown into over $3.6 billion industry here in this country, the majority of that within the last five to six years. Since it was brought here, it has a history of being poorly regulated, and we're already starting to see some significant health effects that it's brought our way. All the major tobacco companies in some way have a stake in vaping in the industry. The most prominent is Altria, the owner of Marlboro, which we would know best, in which, I believe it was last year, they purchased only 35% of Juul for a price tag of $13 billion. So they felt that there's enough money in this industry that for $13 billion, they don't even have a control and stake in that company, which is the most well-known. But along with tobacco, I think parents would recognize, comes their money, their lobbyists, the, you know, all of their history with advertising, and they know how to sell and move a product, which is why it's very important for us as, you know, people in the school and for parents to be aware of how this is targeting our children. These are, I believe, from the CDC. Between the CDC and the FDA, what they're saying is that we have almost, I've heard now, over 4 million students in the middle and high schools that are actually using these devices. It certainly seems to be growing, and it's been often referred to as an epidemic. And even within the school, the other day, we heard our student talk about having the advisory council, and we did a version of this within our advisory council that the SROs have. And we start off by asking the students about, you know, what they believe is the percentage of students that they know that are vaping. And the low end is 60% of their peer group that they feel is vaping. If we extend it to, if they just know somebody that vapes, or they're ever in the presence of somebody that vapes, it may be an adult in their life, or brother or sister, whoever, it's almost every hand that goes up in the room. So our students, our children are certainly being exposed to this on a daily basis. The big thing that comes with the tobacco industry and even all the small businesses is that vaping is being sold to our children as a social activity. We have influence, we have prominent celebrities that are paid advertisers of these, we have influencers on social media. Many of these people also own stake in different companies. They sell different, just like on your computer, your cell phone, you have the different wraps, where you, you know, want to have a design element to it. They make those for vapes as well, so that you can have the most current design on your vape, and the most showy vape. What this does is, obviously, is appealing to particularly teenagers, who want to have the most current and trendy items. And they've taken it and brought it to an online base, where we have children who may not feel, you know, like, everybody's always looking for a sense of belonging and a sense of community, somebody where you fit, you can talk to people. And they have chat rooms, and they have Facebook groups, and they have all these things, where a child can go right onto their phone and be part of this group, and discuss their product, what juices they're mixing, what they're using, how they're using it, ways to disguise it. They started, they, believe it or not, made a quote "sport" out of this called cloud chasing, where they try to see who can make the biggest cloud, who can blow a cloud the furthest. And what this does is entices our children to get in there and try to participate in these activities and outdo each other, all the while not realizing that in order to do an activity such as that, you have to take more of this product into your lungs. And I believe this is probably a good place for, Kiara from Star Prevention has brought in some hides that go nicely at this point?
Yes. If I can just go up there and spot what would be best. So over here, we do have some examples of the vaping devices that Officer Peterson... On the table, we do have some examples of the vaping devices and liquids, and the different types that Officer Peterson had mentioned before. As part of the Bristol County Underage Substance Use Task Force, we do this program that's called Hidden in Plain Sight, that we've done previously in some of the middle schools in Taunton. And this is a mock bedroom display of a teenager's room, and at the display, we show the different hides and different places that students can stash all these items in plain sight. So over here, we do have something that, well, it is a hairbrush, but it is a stash, so the bottom piece could be removed, and anything can, oh, thanks. It's kind of hard to open at the same time. Anything can be stashed in there, whether it's drugs, or drug paraphernalia, anything that students wouldn't want their parents to see. Over here is an Arizona can. It looks like the real deal, feels and weighs sort of the same thing as a regular Arizona iced tea, but it opens, lid opens, and you can screw it back on, and if you just see it on the table, you wouldn't think anything of it. It's just a drink. Over here, we have some Kleenex tissues, but actually pushes off and it opens up. And then, these are just several examples, but you can buy most of these online. They come in different shapes, forms. There's some that look like tampons, and they're flaps, and you can, usually, they use it for concerts. You can take it with you. Obviously, the security officer sees that they're not going to ask you to open your tampon if you're a female. There's teddy bears that open up, and you can stash anything inside. There's water bottles that you can unscrew, same thing. All of these items can be purchased online, on Amazon, on different websites. And if you give your children like Amazon gift cards for Christmas or birthdays, we really recommend that you don't do that unless you're making sure that they're not purchasing items you don't want them to purchase, because all these items can be easily purchased online. Instead, give them a gift card to a store, or some cash, or an actual gift. It's just safer that way. And like always, just, we want parents to be aware, clean your kids' bedrooms once in a while. You'll be surprised what you find. That's it for the presentation. If you guys want to, at the end, come up and touch around, look around, go ahead. Thank you.
Along with this, they have clothing in backpacks that are also meant to easily hide these devices. As I said, a lot of them look like items a student would already have. We have students that have, you know, this little piece, and the parents, you know, ask what it is, and they tell them it's, it's just a plug-in for a wireless mouse or keyboard, and it's really the charging port to charge your Juul into your computer. The Juul stands on top of this, but the magnetic base and charges. You can also find, like I said, the clothing that has hides right in it, that parents may not even realize they're buying clothing line for their child that, that has that hide. And what they're starting to do is, you will see, it's important for parents to pay attention, Kara mentioned the websites and the gift cards, websites, particularly for students that have like affordable clothing, they have like designer clothing for cheap money. And within those sites, there are hidden sales that the kids know how to navigate to. So the parents go in, they set up an account, they think, hey, I know what my, my child is buying, they're buying a two-pack of this shirt. And the two-pack of that shirt, when it arrives in that box, the parent doesn't check it, because they saw the bill and they saw that, and it's really a vape product inside of that, that box. So the, and the important part is that it, those, that's not like the Marlboro companies, it's the small businesses that we're hearing about that are being harmed by the vaping regulation. And in fact, I just heard a report tonight, based out of, I think, the LA Times, that there was a decision in 2015 by the Obama administration, that they tried to ban, the FDA tried to ban flavored vape juices back in 2015. However, due to the perceived issue it would have for small businesses, they chose not to, because... because they didn't think that the economic hit was a big enough justification at the time. Obviously now, you know, where we're at. So, we have the vape juice, which is what goes inside or what is contained within these. As I said, the more dangerous one, you would use bottles like this, which you can buy at all the small local vape shops. You can buy online. And these are the products of great concern to us because, you know, if you buy something through Juul, you know, Marlboro is probably a little better with their, what they're putting into their product. But these, nobody knows, you know, a college kid in a laboratory is mixing that up or somebody that bought a bunch of stuff to make, you know, one of these 15,000 flavors. If you look at the packaging, it's made to look like things kids already have and are used to. I mean, these look like fruity pebbles. I have a candy bowl on my desk and when we showed this, the kids said, that looks like it belongs right in the candy bowl. And that's what is happening here with all of these different flavors and colors and it's attractive and it's stuff that kids are used to. They taste like Jolly Ranchers and other candies that, that they like. And, you know, what we try to tell the kids is, think about this, that this whole thing that we're trying to tell you is they're trying to fool you. They're trying, they're saying, we bet we're smarter than you. We're going to make this look interesting. We're going to create a community that you belong to. We're going to give you flavors. If, if something was really that good or something was okay for you, would somebody have to go through this much work to make you believe it? And so with the ingredients, this is actually from Juul's packaging of what they say is contained within there. And it's glycerol, propylene glycol, natural oils, extracts and flavor, nicotine and benzoic acid. And that's where they leave it. However, until recently, the, we just got backwards here. Nobody was really paying attention to what exactly was in there. And the labels looked just like we saw on that Juul one. So, what they're finding now that they're starting to test them and try to regulate it is that that label doesn't tell half of the story. Nobody really knows what's in there. This list is actually short compared to some of the others that I've seen. And these are 42 chemicals that are identified in e-cigarettes, like of the worst chemicals. And if we look, there are a lot of heavy, yeah, there, there's a lot of nasty things, a lot of heavy metals. And we, you know, we tell kids, hey, did you ever think that I want to go home and inhale some sulfur or tin into my lungs? There's things on here that I can't even really pronounce, you know, the science teachers could, but, but not myself. Another thing that we've heard with e-cigarettes over the years is that it's safe. It only releases a water vapor at the end. There's no secondhand smoke. Well, what they're finding is anything that's in red here has actually been found now with secondhand smoke. So, when people are vaping in a restaurant or in a car with their child, they actually are exposing them to chemicals, which they were told they weren't. So, you know, I can understand, you know, an adult misunderstanding that. However, now the science is changing and formaldehyde is in secondhand vape. Nicotine, which we're going to talk about how, obviously how addictive that is. And what they're actually finding now that they're starting to look into it is that once they mix these chemicals in the bottle, they're finding that as it sits on the shelf, it's forming new compounds that they had no idea was even forming when they put the chemicals together. Because again, what we have is we have people that are making money on cheap materials and mixing them into a bottle to create new flavors, not knowing the science behind what they're doing, not knowing where it came from. Many of the, the sales pitch is that it's, it's quote "food-grade, safe materials" and that's just simply not true. It's true that it's food-safe, but it's not necessarily safe to put into your body in other ways. So, what we're really trying to highlight is that, to the kids, is that tobacco, it took us kind of decades to really, really get to the gravity of how bad it was and what it was doing to us. And about 13 years since vaping's been here, we're already seeing serious health effects. It's actually magnified over what tobacco, I would argue, was initially doing. Vaping's been linked to all these different things, very similar to cigarettes. You know, weaken, weaken immune systems, inflammation of lungs and molleton throat, heart attack and stroke, and nicotine addiction. And the reason being is that when you're taking a vape, you don't know how much nicotine you're getting into your body. Many of these things are said they have no nicotine in them. They test them in a lab. Lo and behold, there's nicotine there. When scientists, this is a relative scale, about addictiveness of drugs that I located. And what these researchers are saying is that nicotine is actually more addictive in, as far as the brain goes than smoked methamphetamine, crack cocaine and heroin amongst other drugs. So, when you have a product that is being put into high doses, that the kids can take into very high concentrations through this product, there is an extremely high likelihood of addiction. And so then we go into how much nicotine is in the vape. And the real answer is that nobody really knows. Juul will tell you how much is in there, but it all depends on how big your lungs are, how big of a hit you take. If you have one of those modified systems that you can crank up the, the voltage on and get more of it in. So the thing is that if we passed a vape around, everybody would get a different level of nicotine into their body. And we see kids that, you know, a group will go into a bathroom and, and smoke an entire cartridge of vape, which, so usually we ask them is how much nicotine is in a Juul pod. I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but believe it or not, the little Juul pod that plugs onto one of these, each one of these is a Juul pod, this little thing. Within that pod is one to two packs of cigarettes worth of nicotine. So, if six kids go into a bathroom and smoke that, they've just, between the six of them, smoked one to two packs of cigarettes. Now, when, I think most, when everybody on the committee was younger, if you smoked one to two packs of cigarettes, you'd probably get pretty sick. You know, there's that whole adage, you know, if your parents catch a smoke and they force you to smoke the pack, you get so sick, you never want to smoke again. Well, with cigarettes, you get what they call the entourage effect. You're smoking the paper, you're smoking the additives, you're smoking all that other stuff. So your body can't get to the point of ingesting that much nicotine. It's just physically impossible for the time it takes to smoke that many cigarettes. Well, with a vape, one person can just continue to hit that vape and get that one pack of cigarettes in a very short period of time without that entourage effect, without that other things burning in there to affect you. And so what we're starting to see is that we see our young people overdosing on nicotine because they're getting so much of it that you just couldn't get with smoking cigarettes.
Madam Chair, thank you. John, excuse me, I just have a question.
Yeah.
So, one Juul, go back to that last slide, please. One Juul pod. So how long would it, one Juul pod equals 20 to 40 cigarettes according to that slide.
Yes.
How long does it, pardon?
That's per the manufacturer. That's their report.
How long does it take to smoke one of those Juul pods?
Again, it varies. It depends how frequently you're hitting it, how, how much you're breathing in. It, it's a complete varied thing and that's the danger for these kids.
So technically, I mean, realistically, you could smoke one of those things in a day, though.
You could smoke it in 15 minutes.
Really?
If you want to sit there and just keep hitting it. Because again, it's not like a cigarette where you're burnt, you're taking it and all the other stuff. You're hitting it and then, you know, people think they're, I'm breathing out water vapor. And they keep hitting it. And the nicotine can't even affect, you're just drinking a coffee. It takes a little while for it to take effect in your system. Well, by the time it starts to take effect, they've already have this buildup that now hits them hard. So, what we also highlight to our kids is that many of these kids want to play, you know, they play sports. They're hoping to get a scholarship to go to college based on either academics or on their athletics. And by using these products, you're, of course, you're going to have a very serious negative effect on that if you're trying to go up against a kid on the field who's not vaping, who's not taking the stuff into their lungs, who doesn't have the wheezing in the coffin, as well as the effect that it can have on your brain. You know, we see children within the system that, that just being teenagers, you have a hard time controlling your emotions and your hormones and all that. We all know that. You throw nicotine into the effect, which affects your dopamine levels in your brain. It's even harder as a teenager to control many of these emotions. We talk about, I, I talked about the food grade, the food safe, which is what's sold on many of these products. The popcorn lung was actually, is called popcorn lung because it was first discovered by workers in a popcorn factory where they all got sick with this irreversible damage that causes, causes scarring in your lungs and the ability of your lungs to take in and use oxygen properly. It can't be reversed. And what it was is a product called diacetal. And diacetal is a food-safe material that is very cheap and readily available. And what happened was is they were using it on the popcorn. It enhances a butter flavor. It became heated by the equipment and turned into a vapor and sickened the workers. That's why it's called popcorn lung. And they talk about it on the different things. So, that along with what they believe now, the vitamin E acetate is, I can't say, you know, I'm not an expert as far as the science goes on any of this stuff, is one of the strong links they're finding with many of the vaping-related illnesses so far. And again, vitamin E acetate is a food-safe material that is tested to be taken, like eaten and absorbed through your stomach. And these things are not meant to be taken and absorbed through your lungs. I like to tell the kids, if I took a bottle of water, if you're thirsty, it's safe to drink, right? If I, if I dumped that into a bucket, would you put your head into it and breathe it into your lungs? No, you wouldn't. So, clear example of a food-safe item that we wouldn't want to use in a different manner than it, than it's intended. So, now the health risks, we're seeing every day, the numbers are climbing. There's over 500 cases, the CDC is saying, in the last five, six months now that are vaping-related illnesses. Many, but not all, involve use of THC. Many of the THC vapes use that vitamin E acetate. But some also using regular vapes. And they're tying it more to these secondary market products, the small businesses online that are, you know, mixing these up in, you know, whatever shop or, and whatnot. So that seems to be one of the things that they're kind of honing in on, but it may not be exactly that. Right now, I think the death toll is up to 14. And again, out of all the people, and we look at how many people die from tobacco, it doesn't seem great, you know, a, a great number. However, vaping has only been here for 13 years. And now we're seeing these, these numbers and we're seeing 18-year-olds that have the lungs of a 70-year-old, according to their doctor. We're seeing 18, 17, 17, 18, 19-year-olds that have vaped for less than two years that have holes in their lungs and collapsed lungs. And then the future, or actually marijuana is already here. So, marijuana follows with nicotine. Once it's in a vape, you don't know how much you're ingesting. In the old days, kids would, you know, would, would smoke a joint or hit a bowl or something of that nature. They could see what they were doing, anybody that has experience with that. With a vape, you don't know what has been put into that little vial that you have. You don't know how much you've ingested into your body. You don't have something that you can see getting smaller as you use it. It's a completely blind usage. Further, if somebody hands it to you, unless you're in a lab, you don't know what is in that. Other narcotics that have been found mixed into different vapes and usually intentionally, but some not so much, bath salts, methamphetamine, flakka, DMT, all of which is psychoactive and synthetic drugs that have significant effects as far as, you know, addiction and on, on the psychological well-being. You know, we're, we're probably seeing the news reports of people that are like biting people's faces off and stuff when they're on bath salts. Well, these things are now apparent in vapes. And again, what we stress to the children is, your friend gives you a vape that you vape with every week. You know, usually he steals it from his older brother. It's usually, you know, safe. Well, that older brother went to a college party and intentionally smoked one of these. Well, when you, when you stole his vape, you don't know what he was actually smoking at that party and it could have been one of these. The scarier thing for us is we all know how much the opioid crisis has affected us. And why, while opioids are not yet available in vapes, people are trying. The CDC and the DEA have proven that it can be done. It's expensive and it's difficult. The people leading the research are actually the drug cartels and the pharmaceutical companies because vaping has been found to be a cost-effective and efficient delivery system into the body. And now we're looking at opioids will be, I believe, the future of what is coming into these products. And again, a blind product that the kids don't know is contained in there. So, where we are is that, you know, it's an epidemic and we're doing our best through these presentations to try to bring the information to our parents and to our kids. You kind of got a, a mix of the multiple formats that we use because we believe each group has its own unique set of information that should be given so that they're aware in that parents and children can engage in an educated discussion. And if we're dealing with parents, they will be able to discuss with their children in an educated format when the, when the child throws at them, it's a food-safe material or whatnot. And we're actually finding that by giving the children these information, we've had kids that have come up to us and said that they actually want to try to stop vaping, which we're working on resources within the school and Coach Sidwell for, for these things. As well as, you know, kids are appreciative that they're finally getting some of this information that they didn't have before. And the next step is we are working to work with teachers more and give them as much of this information as we can. But it is a quite expansive subject that is changing rapidly, so it's difficult to stay on top of.
Thank you. Mrs. Fagan and then Mr. DeMello and Mr. Fury.
I have a question for you. Wasn't, when this stuff first started coming out for the kids, wasn't that kind of advertised as something to help you get away from cigarette smoking?
Correct. The original, and a lot of people still argue that it's a smoke and cessation device, it was actually invented as such. The problem is, is that we know where money can be made, somebody's going to try to make it. And there's an argument out there that I don't buy, that if vaping gets taken away, kids are going to resort to cigarettes, which I believe they will. The problem is, the nicotine levels that they're getting and their bodies are growing accustomed to in a vape, you can't really easily replicate in a cigarette. You know, they're not going to smoke that pack of cigarettes or the two packs of cigarettes that they're going to get in that one container. I believe it's about $15 for three of these, Kara, for, for three of these in a package. So that's, what, up to six packs of cigarettes worth, $15. Cigarettes, we know, you know, eight, nine, $10 a pack. But it would be hard for them to replicate that amount of nicotine, which means they're going to turn to a secondary or black market to get these products, which who knows what's being put into them.
So we're creating a bunch of kids that are now even more addicted to nicotine. They'd probably be better off smoking a cigarette.
I, I would not say better off, no. It, it's a, it's a whole different set of services.
I know, but I mean, it's, when you talk about those levels of, of nicotine that are there, that's frightening.
Neither is good. This presents its own challenges.
I don't even like seeing kids do this. I, I have a question for you. When, when you're in the schools, can you detect when there's vaping in the school? I mean, I know cigarettes put out a lot more smoke than vaping does.
Unfortunately, the vaping sometimes sets off the, the fire alarms.
Oh, that, oh, it does, okay.
You know, we find out through different mechanisms. You know, I'm not going to go too much into everything because I don't want to give everything out on TV. But, but, but we, we do become aware of it and we, and we try to enforce it.
I had a conversation with a colleague the other day when we grew up, we used to get told, your body is a temple. And I'm wondering where, where that message went because some of the things that these kids try, even things like sniffing cinnamon powder, I, I just don't understand what that's all about. I find all these things frightening. Anything that goes into your lungs is frightening.
And the whole point of the education we try to give them is that they've been sold the wrong thing. What they've been sold is not, is not correct and it's been misinformation. And we're trying to make them aware of that as quick as we can. But we know it's hard to change minds and to give them information. But if you have any other questions, I did, I gave you my card.
Yep.
And you can email me and I can give you.
No, it bothers me too when you see movie stars and stuff doing this. They try to make it a glamorous thing and then kids try to emulate that. I, I just, I feel terrible about this. Yeah, I know, I know. Thank you very, thank you for your presentation. That was very educational.
Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to all for the presentation. I think the touchy-feely thing is important to me to actually realize how this is all taking place, you know, in disguise. But two questions. Is there a minimum age, what's the minimum age for someone to purchase this? And is it across the entire United States or is it state by state?
The minimum age is 21 in Massachusetts. That just recently changed. However, it is not universal across the country. And as you're seeing, different governors, you know, the governor of Massachusetts, Governor Baker, just put a whole four-month stop to try to, you know, just figure out what's going on. Again, that just pushes, the, the negative consequences, it pushes people to the, the secondary market. The secondary market is even less controlled. And then.
Do you happen to know where Rhode Island is in New Hampshire?
I, I don't. I, I know that last, last weekend, again, because I research this almost every day now, New Hampshire was saying that they've seen a 20% increase in their daily sales of vape products. They couldn't say if it was tied specifically to Massachusetts people coming over or if it was people in New Hampshire being fearful that their governor was going to do the same thing. But the hidden side of it is the products being sold in the small shops, which we see all over our communities and as well as online, which aren't reported. We just, we don't know those numbers. It, it's a, it's a market that's very hard, tough to track.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Fury.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've had some experience with food-safe substances that their manufacturer has encouraged vaping. And these are products that are actually very beneficial when they're not vaped. They claim that vaping is a more efficient delivery of it, but of course it has a harmful effect on lungs. It doesn't. I, I take hemp oil, which has some of the beneficial properties of medical marijuana. It's used for treatment of anxiety and pain among other things. I take it for anxiety. And also, it's sold as a dietary supplement for increasing fatty acids. They encourage you using it in salad dressing. And I think that's something that that beneficial is being encouraged to be vaped, I, I think, is, is a horrid thing. But the fir, the first time I ever bought some, the manufacturer suggested the best way to deliver it is, is vaped. Like I can tell you from, I, I haven't had the experience of vaping and I have had the experience of taking it orally. I can tell you, taking it orally is really effective. I wouldn't want to try vaping it.
Yeah, it's probably been more tested to be taken orally for one. Yeah, it's probably been more tested to be taken orally for one. And two, when they talk about that vaping is safer than cigarettes, it's a big misconception. They're not saying it's safe. They're just saying it's less bad. So, I don't know about you, but I don't want something that's less bad. I want something that's safe. And the whole, the science that they argue, the statistics that they will argue, is that comparative use. So, if you smoked a pack of cigarettes a day, and you switched to one Juul pot in a day, this is going to be less bad on your lungs. But again, we all know, we work with children, we know that children don't have that switch that says, "I'm going to stick to the one Juul pot a day." They'll have, if they have six available, they might go through six of them with their friends. And that becomes the problem. Again, it's just misinformation in the way it's sold to them. And many people are unaware of how it's being marketed, and that it's misleading.
Mr. Doherty.
Oh, thank you very much. I know that there, in the past three years, there have been workshops at our parent university on dueling and vaping. So, for that relatively small audience, there has been an effort by the district to at least begin to create, at that time, communication with families. So, my question is, what kind of an education campaign are we, or are we doing, or are we thinking about doing? As I hear you talk, I'm imagining that you're talking to groups of students at the high school level, perhaps even the middle school. But are we educating our administrators and our teachers? And are we talking to children at the elementary level at their level? Are we developing literature to distribute to families? How is this campaign against vaping? I mean, can you imagine that parents should be aware of just the paraphernalia?
Yeah, if I could just, if I could interject. So, Mr. Peterson, Officer Peterson, does have a commitment later this evening. So, he's giving the first part of the presentation. Mrs. Perry and Mr. Sidwell will give the second and third part of the presentation, which I believe will answer your question, Mrs. Doherty. So, if we can wrap up our time with Officer Peterson.
And feel free, I gave you my cards before, because I knew my time would be limited. You can shoot me an email with anything, and I will certainly get back to you.
I just have one quick question. What is...
Flakka.
Flakka.
What is that?
Flakka.
Flakka is a drug, I'm not an expert on these narcotics, but it's a psychoactive drug. From what I understand, similar, it's like a methamphetamine-type or bath salt drug. I can't give you the best explanation on it.
And before Officer Peterson leaves, I just want to say, "Thank you," because I hope this is an opportunity for the public and the school committee to see that IRSROs are just not in our schools policing. They're forming meaningful relationships, and they're also addressing topics with our students that are relative, that are real, and making an impact beyond the typical policing that we see. So, thank you to you and your colleagues for everything you do above and beyond your scope of work.
You're welcome. We appreciate it for the opportunity. Thank you.
So, how do you follow that up, Mr. Sidwell and Mrs. Perry?
Just to answer your question a little bit, you asked about what we've tried to do educationally. Two years ago, this presentation was in front of all our wellness teachers, the in-plane site. We've gone to a number of seminars, the MIA, the group that sponsors us. We go in and do many of their workshops with that. We've met with Officer Peterson before this, but they have done kind of big group presentations. You heard that they did it for the advisory last month. They talked about it, and they had something where we've organized to get into our Wellness 8 classes and our Wellness 10 classes at the high school, to have it in a much more smaller group, so it would be more individualized learning with it. But that's what we've done. Every faculty, every department meeting that we have with our staff, we're always asking the same question. It's just like you see here, it's changing and growing, and there's all kinds of different information, and it's scary to us too, what's happening to our kids and what's being marketed to our kids. And we're trying to find ways to make sure that not only do they understand the science of it, but also that they're being marketed to, and how to understand what that is. So, those are some of the things that we have done. Does that help some of the questions?
So, what I'm hearing you say is that, so department meetings, assuming at the high school?
Yeah, and everywhere.
So, I'll wait till after Mrs. Perry presents, because I'm asking about a more broad education campaign across the district, so I'll wait.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what we've been doing. It's been, because it has grown so quickly and it has changed, it's, we have tried to adapt to that. We've certainly put it into our curriculum and taught it into our classes at the wellness level at eighth grade and 10th grade.
So, thank you, Mr. Sidwell. So, those are some of the things, yes. We also, now that we have our health teachers at the middle school level, we're having it addressed there as well. Mr. Sidwell just touched upon the MIAA. There's another workshop on October 25th that we'll plan to attend. I'm actually attending a workshop this Friday in Yarmouth regarding vaping and substance abuse. And so, every time I attend these, I then push the information out to the principals. Mr. Peterson, Officer Peterson, has given the presentation already to Martin Middle School. He is setting up his dates for Friedman and for Parker as well, so we're going to touch on all the middle schools. In addition to that, he talked a little bit about what vaping can lead to. And so, what I've done this year is I have scheduled presentations every month for all of the middle school students and their families. So, I'd like to maybe just outline what we'll be doing for the next five or six months. I can give you the individual dates and times, and you'll be able to attend any of those things that you'd like to. So, you know, I want to thank John Peterson again. He really has done an amazing job. Our SROs, we are very, very lucky to have them. Although John is housed at the high school, he along with Jay LaPlante and Pete McDougall work very closely in supporting our middle school students. The dangers of vaping that you saw tonight is just one presentation that our middle school students will be exposed to. Next month, well, actually, this month now, in October, all three middle schools will receive a presentation by Cory Palazzi. Cory's Cause has been part of the middle school education for the past several years. Together with his parents, Lori and Dave Gonzalez, all the seventh graders, along with their parents, will host a question and answer session. In November, we begin with our Sandy Hook Promise Initiative with the Attorney General's Office. This is the first of a three-part series. The first part of this series is See Something, Say Something. So, the focus is on school safety and preventing social isolation. In December, all sixth and seventh grade students, along with their parents, will have an opportunity to work with Dr. Richard Geary. Dr. Geary has been brought to us from the Children's Advocacy Center, and his workshop is titled, "Promote Responsible Use of Technology and Prevent Digital Abuse." This presentation will have a follow-up in the month of January with Officer Jay LaPlante. Jay will outline the rules and laws surrounding appropriate use of cell phones and social media. In February, we'll be looking at signs of suicide with Anne Marie Maltese and Steve Palm. I'm working closely with Steve and Anne Marie to finalize the details for our February presentation. In March, we will be hosting a parent evening with April Cabrera from the District Attorney's Office, and Kiara Zia will be there as well to do our hidden in-plane sight presentation. And so, thinking about all of these presentations, our goal is prevention. That's really our goal. And these are very difficult topics to discuss. But we feel as though providing the education to both the students and their parents at the middle school level will at least allow them an opportunity to reach out and speak and ask questions. As you can see, we are committed monthly to trying to support our middle school students, both with their social, emotional, and mental health well-being. Again, I'll provide you with all the specific dates of all the workshops and all the presentations, and you're welcome to attend any of them. But vaping is one part of all of these things that we're trying to help our students. You know, students that struggle may turn to a vape. We're working on the larger picture. We're working on their social, emotional well-being, and hopefully, by continuing to educate the parents, educate the students, provide them with an opportunity to talk about it, we're hoping that we'll be able to, you know, really support them and try to move them away from this and move them to other things.
Any question? Go ahead.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. So, I, so you will provide us through the superintendent with a list of those activities and locations and so forth and so on, as they develop, and that's much appreciated. Are you thinking about putting together a whole brochure, so that when you're distributing information to families, they can anticipate what's going on, putting this stuff on our, I'm sure you're doing all of that, social media communication and all of that, to maximize participation? So, the question remains about educating our staff. I mean, I guess I'm thinking about recognizing, a child comes in, even a little person comes in with this paraphernalia that they find around their house. Our elementary teachers should be able to, seems to me, should be able to recognize what the paraphernalia looks like. So, the question is, if and when all of this information is being pushed down to the elementary level as well?
Yeah. I mean, we're definitely working on that. We do a lot through our principal meetings, where we'll push it out to the principals, and then the principals will in turn push it out to the staff. But we are, you know, we're still working on it. As Mr. Sidwell said, we felt like, you know, obviously, we've known about vaping, but we feel like in the past eight months is really when we've, it's been on the news, it's been just so kind of brought into the forefront. And now, with the ban, it's presenting other issues, as Officer Peterson said. So, we're trying to combat all of those issues. But it's a continual process. And yes, we don't have, I don't have an outline of how it's getting pushed out exactly, but as we get information, we then share that information. You're welcome.
Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very interesting. My colleague probably asked 90% of my questions, so the brainwaves on this side of the table maybe. Thank you, Mrs. Perry. That presentation was stunning. I don't see how, you know, you're hearing a lot of commercials and from these manufacturers saying, "We're not targeting towards kids." Well, guess what? You're targeting towards kids, and we're seeing the effects of that. So, I think this is an ongoing process. Try to target all of the students, middle school, high school, staff at the elementary school. I think any reasonable adult would see some of this and know that it's not right. So, but we just have to keep educating, because the hidden, the hidden, the hidden stuff is, I think, is amazing, that they can get this online and then hide it. It makes it all, all think twice about giving a teenager an Amazon gift card. That's all I'll say. But I was stunned on that one. That was a good point.
It's true, and I think that's the point of this, you know? Educating, making people aware, things we never even would think about, an Amazon gift card. So, that's the point of this. The more we can get out, the more we can talk about it. That was why, you know, I was really excited that we were able to present it here. So, hopefully, people are watching at home and sharing, and hopefully, it's actually promoting conversations at home, which is, you know, which is really the goal, for the kids to come home from school and say, "Hey, I saw our presentation today," or the parents knew, we had sent a letter home prior, so the parents knew that they were having the presentation. So, hopefully, to get that communication going at home. "How was the presentation today? What did you learn?" You know, that's, you know, because their, you know, their parents are just so influential.
Thank you. And one more question, Madam Chair, to Mr. Cabral. Do you think it would be helpful to put this up on the website, this presentation, so in case a parent wanted to review it again?
I think it would be very helpful. I think Mrs. Perry alluded to it quite eloquently, is the more we educate, the more we discuss, the more we bring awareness. We believe it will have a positive impact in deterring this type of behavior, or people turning to dueling. So, yes. And we know that the way that we connect, or the way that we learn, maybe through newsprint, is not how our parents or how our students learn. Maybe it's a video, or maybe it's a slide deck or PowerPoint on our website that they can access. So, we'll approach this through multiple approaches, virtual backpack, post it on our website, additional information. We'll try to flood the market, so to speak, using social media.
Flood the information. And one more question, Madam Chair. If, it may be helpful, just thinking right outside the box, if these little hidden gadgets, storage hidden gadgets like this, little Amazon, Arizona can, if you had a few pictures of these on the website as well, or what the hidden, how they hide them and things like that?
Yeah, actually, one of the projects that Mrs. Perry and I have talked about is creating our own desk or bedroom, so that at each school, or something that we can travel or move to each school for parent-teacher nights, or when they have an open house, where you have 500 of, an entire school body assembled, and all the parents can have access and see what's there.
You've got to watch right by it.
Right. It's very, very powerful. I know the first time that I experienced the hidden in-plane sight, I was just amazed at what's out there, especially when you consider the clothing, how it can be concealed in clothing, and you would just think it's just another zipper that somebody would use to store their cellphone, a chapstick, or something small.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome, Mr. Martin.
Just one thing with the hides. It's probably best just to either show it to the parent, person-to-person, because if you do upload this on social media, children can see it. So, anyone under 21 might get ideas on how to hide things. So, that's one thing to keep in mind. I think the person-to-person contact might be the best way with the parents, or if it's just a flyer that you're going to hand to them, might be the best thing to do.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
I'm sure they're not going to repeat everything that my colleagues have said, but a great presentation. I was just wondering if we could just maybe, I know Mr. Jakes televises our meetings in their full length, if they could just take a piece out of this meeting and maybe publicize it more often than the regular school committee meetings? And maybe we can get the municipal council station to also put this on, because there are, there are those people that don't watch, you know, the school committee meetings, but they do watch the other city meetings. So, between the two, we could flood the market, so to speak, so that there are people who don't have any kids in the school system, but they should know what's going on too.
That's a good point.
Okay, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Exactly, those were my comments. I mean, this is a community effort. It's not a responsibility of Mrs. Perry or Officer Peterson or anybody else. It's a community effort. Like Mr. Martin just said, it's not just affecting the kids, but the adults need to know and be aware. So, we take it upon ourselves, as school committee members, to get the message out there, and of course, everybody else in the community, whether they have children, not children, to get this message out there. So, we all come together as a community, and hopefully, we can combat this soon-to-be disease, if it isn't already. Thank you.
Any other questions to the committee? Thank you very much for a wonderful presentation. Okay, moving on. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. So, I have some information to report out regarding the modernization of the foundation budget, also known as the Student Opportunity Act. So, on Thursday, September 19th, 2019, the Joint Education Committee released a comprehensive school finance bill titled the Student Opportunity Act. The Student Opportunity Act makes an unprecedented $1.5 billion investment in Massachusetts public education. When factoring in inflation throughout the seven-year phase-in period, the bill could total as much as $2.2 billion. The bill will address four primary areas: educating low-income students, addressing the escalating special education costs, the costs associated with educating English-language learners, and also addresses the rising healthcare costs. In addition to addressing those four areas, the bill also allocates funding for transportation reimbursement, which I'll discuss a little further in my report, and also adds additional funding to the MSBA for new school projects and new school buildings. So, I'm just going to skip through my report and highlight on the important areas. So, skipping down to the second bullet, to address the healthcare increasing costs, there will be an inflation factor, and the bill will also collect and analyze all the GIC rates and use an average percentage of the GIC rates in order to calculate the healthcare costs moving forward. What's also very exciting is the way they're going to account for our students. So, when we do the foundation budget, or when Mrs. Mahonahan and I present the foundation budget, we talk about how the way we report our special education students is a percentage. It's not an actual FTE count. So, in order to determine these special education students' FTE, instead of being 3.75% of the... three-point-seven-five percent of the October one enrollment report, it'll be four percent of the non-vocational students and five percent of the vocational students. So that's an increase, so we'll see additional dollars as more students will be captured, which is beneficial to a community such as ours. Also, what's different in this bill is the way we are going to, or the way the state will increase funding to educate English learners or students who are new to our country. So in, in the past, there was always an equal amount of funding for students, no matter what grade you are in. What you're going to see now is incremental increases, because they've determined, or they've heard, that the older the student is when they enter the country, the more expensive it is to educate the child, so they're going to backload the money versus front-loading the money when it comes to calculating those costs. And also, there are ten deciles that exist now for low-income students. They've increased it to twelve deciles. Currently, out of the ten deciles, Taunton is number nine, so we, we receive additional funding. With the twelfth, having twelve deciles now, based on my calculations and Mrs. Monahan's calculations, we're probably going to be somewhere either eight or nine, depending on what figure we use. So the bill, as Jay Sullivan and Rob Curtin articulated to us last Wednesday at the Masbo meeting, will either be able to use our free and reduced lunch percentage from two thousand sixteen, or our current free and reduced lunch percentage. Whichever percentage is higher, that is the percentage that we will use. So they do not want to penalize districts if the percentage has increased. They want districts to receive the highest percentage possible. The bill also provides additional funding and addresses and acknowledges social-emotional learning and the mental health needs of our students by providing additional funding for expanded guidance in psychological services. It also reimburses charter school payments to districts over a three-year period of time. As I, I was very excited to learn, and this has always been a large budget item for the school department, a circuit breaker will now incorporate added district transportation costs. So that'll be phased in over a four-year period, twenty-five percent increment. So that's going to be a large, that'll be additional dollars that we'll receive as a school department. And what we also learned at Masbo last week was that they're going to cap the circuit breaker threshold. So whatever the threshold is this year, I believe it's around forty-five thousand, it's not going to increase as the per pupil expenditure of the state increases. It'll be capped at forty-five thousand, and anything above forty-five thousand educated student plus the transportation cost to educate a special needs student will be reimbursed seventy-five percent. So that will result in additional dollars to the Taunton Public Schools. The MSBA sees its budget increased by a hundred and fifty million dollars, and the governor will have, what it also creates is something called the Twenty-First Century Education Trust Fund, that the governor will be able to receive applications and award districts' funding to support innovative approaches to enhancing student learning opportunities. So the, we anticipate, or we've been told, that the bill will be expedited, as it's been reviewed by the Ways and Means and the legislative leadership, and they've been extremely supportive of the bill, so we hope to have some good news, I've heard, as soon as November. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them at this time.
Mrs. Doherty.
So I, I get regular communications from the Mass Teachers Association, and there is a lobbying day on Friday, so people are being called to the State House. I also noted that there are some sixty-plus amendments that are being offered to, to the bill. So in your meeting with Masbo, are you, are they, are you anticipating that, once adopted, that it's going to affect this year's budget or the two thousand twenty-one budget?
Two thousand twenty-one.
So any, any idea how much money and sort of round numbers we might be looking at, if all things are equal for us?
Great question, Mrs. Doherty. So Mrs. Monahan and I, once the bill was released, and in the bill itself, it does have the reimbursement amounts or the amounts that will be funded in, on the chapter seventy, but it's the projection seven years from now. What Rob Curtin has advised and cautioned us is they haven't come out and said what the incremental increases will be over a seven-year period of time. Jay Sullivan joked and said it could be zero, zero, zero for six years, and then on the seventh year, you get the increase. They, they haven't allocated how it's going to be spread out over that time. So we can take the increase and divide it over seven years and run some models to see what the funding would look like, to give us an idea, plus factor in the inflation. So they have an idea where they want us to be in seven years, but it's also going to be increased by the inflation year to year. The inflation fluctuates year to year. Yeah, we have an idea. They, so they presented the rates. It's in the bill. I don't know off the top of my head. It's, because there's, there's, there's twelve deciles, Mrs. Doherty, and then there's also the administrative line. So it ranges from four thousand for administration, and then it goes as high as, I believe, twelve thousand for the twelfth decile. So it's, it's a very wide range, which we can present when we do our foundation budget review.
Well, it sounds very hopeful.
It's very promising.
Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent, I just lost my train of thought, but anyway, is this tied to state revenue projections, intake, casino money, whatever kind of monies they're projecting to be taken in? Is this tied to that?
Yeah, so the, based on what they shared with us at the meeting last week, they're basing it on what they project for revenue at the state level, and they're also factoring in revenue that we generated through the casinos and also through the new marijuana bills.
So this one-point-five, what is it, billion? What is it, one-hundred-and-fifty million? What's the total amount?
It could be as high. With inflation, it could be as high as two-point-two billion.
Right. So there's nothing etched in stone that this is definitely going to happen within the seven years. The only thing that's, that comes to mind is when we started the Big Dig Project, it started at one billion, then it went to two billion, ended up at eighteen billion dollars. So I, I mean, people throw out numbers sometimes, and there's, there's no concrete, how should I say, attachment to this. So I, I don't think we should be, how should, so I'm hopeful, I'm anxious, I just don't hope we're spending money that we don't have yet, okay? And I think I bring that up just about every time we talk about budget. So we take it one day at a time, as soon as things happen. I think two thousand twenty-one is what you mentioned, as far as the first cycle. So it's still a long way off, and we hope and wait for the best.
Yeah, I think Mr. DeMello brings up a very good point, which we discussed at our table with the fellow business managers and superintendents who attended the meeting last week, is we're kind of still in the same situation as we are every year. We're not going to know what our final budget is when we start the budget process. So we'll have an idea when the governor releases his budget in January, but again, that could change up to June, so we're going to still present, I'll present you with a level budget, and then if there are increases, then we'll have opportunities to add to our budget. So you're, you are correct. We don't know, and when you read the bill, it does mention subject to appropriation many times in the bill, because again, it's a seven-year phase-in, and we don't know what the phase-in's going to look like.
Any other questions?
And then, just as, just as.
Madam Chair?
Sorry?
Yeah, I was, I was up to.
Oh, you have a question? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm hopeful, but my colleague across from me hit it right on the head, that's where I was headed with this, is the biggest hang-up on this is the revenue source. There's no question about it, from what I read, and one-point-five billion is a staggering number, and, and that number, they're going to find revenue for it. So I think, I always say, when it comes to the legislature, I've seen this over the years with, with our budgets, it's not a done deal till it's a done deal. And it's, we'll hear a number today, and tomorrow it'll be either twenty percent higher or thirty percent lower. It just keeps, it's a moving target. So very hopeful, but until they tell a revenue source, and, and some of these revenue sources are emerging revenue sources, so they may not even have a, they may not even have a, any history behind them. So as, as the revenue source emerges, they'll, they'll know better. So if they say November, I bet you it's going to be January, February, at the earliest, or sometime early next spring. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, so as we receive updates through either the MASs, Masbo, MASC, which I also receive their newsletters, we'll, I'll be sure to update the school committee, because this is very important to a community such as Taunton, as well as the twenty-three additional gateway communities, our brothers and sisters. The next item, which is a precursor to a more in-depth conversation we'll have later this month regarding our MCAS results. So we are in year two of Next Generation MCAS. So just, again, just to give a quick, quick update to the board and also those watching at home. The purpose of the accountability system is to provide clear actionable information to families, community members, and the public about the district's and school performance. Additionally, the accountability system helps DESI provide direct resources and assistance to schools or districts identified in need of assistance. So again, we were, so despite having four schools identified as needing, identified for promising practices and intervention, the lessons that we learned from those four schools, we were able to replicate in all our schools, and I'm very proud of the work we've done around instructional leadership teams. So that is one benefit that we received from the MCAS, and that was funded to the tune of about eighty thousand dollars to fund professional development for our staff and for our administrators. So just turning over and to continue going with my report. Commissioner Riley last year did not identify or not label any new schools, citing that the transition to the new accountability system, he wanted to be a slow rollout. But again, he's leaving that door open as far as potentially designating more schools underperforming this year. But Commissioner Riley has been, you know, he's stated it several ti, many times, in all the times I've heard him speak. We heard him last year at the MASC conference, and he wants to give out school districts an opportunity to breathe, learn the new system before he starts designating schools underperforming. So on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education released a two thousand nineteen MCAS school and district accountability and assistant levels. The release is the second year of a gradual rollout of the Next Generation standardized test. All Taunton Public School students in grades three through ten participated in the online exam. This is the first time that Taunton High School tenth graders took the Next Generation MCAS in both English and math. When reviewing the test scores, educators and stakeholders must keep in mind that the standards for meeting expectations are more rigorous than the standards for meeting the proficient level on the legacy MCAS exam. So this is a more challenging test, and it also places more emphasis on achievement versus student growth, which we've discussed in the past. So overall, I just want to share some highlights and talk about some areas that we need to continue doing more work in. So overall, non-high school students in grades three to ten who participated in the English Language Arts exam and the mathematics exam missed their composite scale, scale score. In ELA, they missed their target by two-point-four points, and in math, they missed their target by one-point-six points. The high school tenth graders demonstrated little change in the area of ELA, missing their target by two points. However, we saw some strong growth in the area of math at the high school. So the tenth-grade cohort exceeded its target score in all groups tested. I provided you with a little chart so you can see their growth and see how well they performed. Very proud of the work at the high school. So despite putting their plan together or working on their plan, they were able, also able to demonstrate growth, which is a great sign. The greatest gains were made by our EL, former EL students, who exceeded their target by sixteen and a half points, and the lowest performing exceeding their target by seven-point-two points. So overall, Taunton High School was able to improve its accountability percentile by six percent. So last year, the high school was identified in the bottom ten percent, they increased by six percent, and now they're in the sixteenth percentile. So it's not where we want them to be, but it's a great first step towards demonstrating improvement. So we're proud of the work there. So as a whole, the district demonstrated moderate progress towards meeting its goals. As a result, the district's overall classification remains not requiring assistance or intervention. So at the later meeting, Mr. Barado and I will take a deeper dive and give you a more in-depth analysis on all our schools, but overall, considering where we were and where we are now, we were able to move the high school in the right direction. The high school is still in that accountability status because of one subgroup, which we are addressing this year, but we're, we're very proud of the work, and I think we're on the right track with the interventions we have in place. And that concludes my report.
Mrs. Doherty.
No. Thank you for indulging me. I appreciate that. I think the Boston Globe, maybe yesterday, in one of its headline stories said, and just to reiterate what you're saying about the difficulty that is inherent in these new tests, and that as we look at our own scores, we need to keep that, we need to keep that in mind. The title of the article, "Students Struggle on Revised MCAS." And it says that sixty-one percent of tenth graders, this is statewide, met or exceeded expectations on the new English MCAS test compared to ninety-one percent of tenth graders in the previous year, two thousand eighteen. So that's a significant drop because of the new test. So as we look at our test results on the October sixteenth, I guess, at our next meeting, we need to keep that in mind. And I think that that analysis is really critical, as you know, it's like bringing Kohl's to Newcastle. As you, you are going to present, I always use those euphemisms, and you look at me and say, "What does that mean?" That's an old-fashioned.
He's young.
Yeah, he's young, right? Bailey Wick, Kohl's to Newcastle. At any rate, I lost my train of thought. So it's really important, as you present the, the dates, your plan for your strategic planning, this information is really important to our staff out there as they, as we talk about what goes into that strategic plan, hoping to address these issues that we, where we find weaknesses as well as strengths.
Yeah, and just, and I forgot to mention, so I did, I did an analysis over the weekend comparing the gateway communities. So there are twenty-four gateway communities, which we are one, and obviously, we want to be at the top of the gateway list, and then we also want to be, you know, better than our neighboring sister communities. So of the twenty-four gateway communities, when it comes to ELA, we had the fifth lowest failure rate out of the twenty-four. And out of the twenty-four gateway communities, when it came to math, we had the seventh lowest failure rate. So we're, we're doing well when we compare us to like communities, but obviously, we want to be at the top. And again, we're, we're talking about districts like Cambridge that are in that group, we're talking districts like Malden and Framingham, which are in Quincy, which are in that group. But when, when you look at where we are, we're, we're holding our own amongst the gateways, but obviously, we know that's not good enough, and we want to do better, and we will do better.
Motionant's receptive report.
She made a seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Staffing report?
Second.
She made a seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Reads quarterly report.
She placed on file.
She made a seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Subcommittee reports. Finance and Law, Mr. Martin.
Finance and Law Subcommittee made earlier this evening, with myself, Mr. Sousa, Mr. Fiore, also in attendance, with Mr. Cabral and Ms. Monahan. First item on the agenda tonight was the request from Taunton High School to replenish its student activity account in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and fifty-one cents. We also had a report that was attached to the agenda on use of facilities. It was quite extensive, but I guess it takes us into the spring. A third item on the agenda was bill's payable in the amount of four hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred eighteen dollars and fifty-nine cents. Finally, we had a facilities update. The tennis courts at the Oakland complex are all done, are all set, been refurbished. The Bennett Playground will be done shortly. The rubber surface is being taken care of next week, and it should be ready for use on October fourteenth, if everything goes as planned. And also, the specifications for the replacement of the rug, so to speak, of the turf football field, and the refreshing of the track around the football field, those specs are being put together as we speak. And in addition to that, we're looking at expanding the specs to include getting prices on the upgrading of the practice fields off, off of Williams Street. So that would be one major project, which we'll come back to the committee for approval before it goes out to bid. And finally, today was National Custodians Day. Lunches were prepared by students in the Tiger Cafe and delivered to the first and second shift custodians.
Motionant's receptive report and adopt the recommendations of the subcommittee.
She made a seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any new business?
We have a communication from the literacy council for a literacy walk that was going to take place on Sunday, October twentieth, and Mr. Cabral has asked that the school committee support him in this walk. He's going to be walking, and he would like us to sponsor him. So.
So I would like to propose a school committee team to combat Mr. Cabral's donations and colleagues.
I'm in.
There you go.
I'm in.
So we would like to have our own team.
We want your own team. We're part of the team. He's part of our team.
Well, no, yeah, I understand that, but he's going to, he wants our support, we want our own support.
We'll put a team together.
Okay. All right. That's fine.
We'll put a team together.
So what are we doing?
What are we doing? We're walking and donating.
Spending money. We're walking.
We're walking as a team.
We're spending money and walking.
Collecting donations as a team.
So we're making personal donations to our team. The donation comes out of our budget of what?
No, personal donations.
Personal budget.
Twenty dollars. Oh, my goodness. Okay. Any other new business?
Unfinished.
Mister, no more new business, right? Okay, unfinished business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the superintendent, I know a while back we brought up about the, actually, it was in the spring, about the technology to livestream our meetings via the internet, and there was a, I know there was a talk, we had to buy some pieces of equipment, and I just wondered what the status update on that is. Because a lot of people, a lot of people are dropping cable, but if they still have the internet, they still can watch the meetings online.
I apologize, Mr. Sousa. I don't have an update on that, but I would ask Wendy to add that to our action items. So it's something that I will continue to work on with the team to make sure we get you an update in the near future.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, and talking about unfinished business, on the action items, we have tonight a letter from the safety officer with a diagram about Letty School and what they're doing, and referred to the council. Letter came from.
City Council President.
City Council President, and the officer gave us a diagram of what they're going to do here, so perhaps, I don't know, who wishes the committee either to keep it on or to discharge.
I propose keeping it on just so that we can monitor the progress of it. I know I've had inquiries about how it's going to look and how it's going to work. I'd like to do that so we can see how it's implemented.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Secondly, we have a memo from Mrs. Monahan discussing the Friedman floor gym. Mr. Otto Vannelli said that the cover is used, can be used for both Taunton High School and Friedman, so motion to discharge.
Second.
Madam Chair, you would have to address the previous safety officer.
Item?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so this was brought to city council on the eighteenth of September. What happened at the city council meeting? Did I miss something?
No.
No?
So if I remember correctly, and again, showing my age, but I believe at the last school committee meeting or two school committees meetings ago, there was a motion to refer this item to the city council. So this is a memo that I wrote to Council President Jeff Postel, summarizing the work and also including the work, and encouraging encouraging their support so that this can be adopted and moved forward.
So at what stage is it at? It's in city council hands?
I will verify with Mr. Postel when I speak with him, where it is with them. So the motion was to refer this to city council, which is what I did.
Point of information, some of the signage and alignment and so forth requires ordinance, and so the council needs to go through that as well.
Right, but it's being addressed. That's what I'm, my concern is, is it being addressed through the ordinance, subcommittees, or through the city council as a whole, or?
It's in the same council with the safety officer. And just for point of information also, Route one thirty-eight is a state. It has nothing to do with the city, so they have to approach the state to get some of the signage.
Right, but this is, with all due respect, Madam Chair, this has been going on for months, and I think we should, you know, try to get this to the right hands as soon as possible. Mr. Superintendent's already done that with the city council. I just want to make sure that we're on top of this, and whatever we can do to assist, you know, that's what I really want the outcome to be. So I'd appreciate any feedback we can get from our colleagues on city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Doherty.
Yeah, just for clarification, it was the recommendation of the safety officer when, after we received this diagram, that the next step was to send this to the city council for their approval. So this October second memo that is before us is that, I'm assuming that it is that communication recommended by the safety officer. So there is that process, and to Mrs. Almeida's point that it is a state highway, and so it has to go through all of that legal city council approval.
Madam Chair, motion to discharge the cover for the gym floor.
Okay.
Second one up.
Second.
And also, there's one other one that was referred to the safety officer.
Call a vote on that. Discharge.
Motion to discharge the gym floor.
George seconded it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Okay, and also, there's a memo regarding the no parking on both sides of William Street. Mrs. Monahan contacted Officer Williams to discuss the issues of the vehicles parking on William Street. The safety officer stated he had visited William Street twice during the evening and has spoken with some of the residents to identify the problem of those responsible. Based on his observation, compensation with the residents, and history with the area, there's no room to park on William Street between county and the Honorable Gordon M. Owen Riverway without blocking a traffic lane and parking upon the sidewalk. The safety officer is recommending a city ordinance to be adopted to prohibit parking on William Street between county and Gordon M. Owen. So the city engineer will review the sections of William Street. So I guess it's up to the city now what they're going to do.
Motion to discharge.
Motion to discharge. Or a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, so moved. Okay, so those are the unfinished items. Mr. Demello?
Thank you. If we could go up to the Taunton High School academic building addition, the verbiage or the way it's explained, it's already been out in the community, as a matter of fact, that this is exclusively for the ROTC. And how it's read here, it says, "Refer to Long Range Planning Sub, Long Range Planning and School Property Subcommittee to work with the administration to start the conversation possible feasibility study for an academic building addition to Taunton High School for the and AF, Air Force Junior ROTC." So either we say.
Madam Chair, I made the motion. Madam Chair, that's not stated correctly.
Right.
That was for the, the primary is for Taunton High School Band. So let's just say Taunton High School Band.
For the band and AF?
Both.
I think if it's multi-use, I mean, I don't think we should just be specific to the ROTC or the band.
But the band is, it's academic, so the band is the primary because of the size and the ROTC for their for their maneuvers. But it's up to the administration, they're going to make a presentation. So whatever they, additional recommendations is certainly we'll listen to.
I just didn't want to be narrow-minded on this, that's all.
Yeah, we're not, definitely not. It's up to the administration. They're going to come up with a presentation.
Yeah, actually, the presentation will have classroom space, band, ROTC, STEM space, so again, we'll bring it to the table, we'll hash it out, and then you'll provide us with some direction on where you'd like us to go.
Thank you.
So if I may, I have a question on that. So does that mean addition to Taunton High School?
So.
And where would it go? Because.
So that's part of the discussion.
When we allowed that to happen over there, that took all the additions that we could possibly do to Taunton High School.
So, you know, just, just, yeah, I mean, what Mrs. Monahan and I have been looking at is existing space that will not impact roadways, may impact parking, may impact travel in and out of the school, but it would provide some additional class space or large space for large group instruction. So again, I have some rough ideas just to kind of give the subcommittee an idea of what where we feel space could be built out with minimal impact on the overall operations and flow of the facility.
If I may, and I'm sure that Mr. Martin, and you're too young, you came here, but back in the day, back in the day, they used the armory for the cadets, Taunton High Cadets, which is very similar to the ROTC. They used to have the cadet balls over there and so forth and so on, and the armory isn't in use, so Mr. Fiore would remember that, too.
I was in the, both the cadet corps and the band.
It wouldn't be a bad idea to approach the armory to see if we could use some space for our ROTC program, because the students aren't practicing when the armory is in session.
You can make that call.
Do you remember that, Mr. Demello?
No, I just have a comment.
Okay. Go ahead.
I remember.
I mean, whether they're ROTC banned or whatever, they're still our students, and now we have a transportation issue, and I think keeping them all in-house, I think, is more appropriate, so I.
They walk across the street.
Yeah, I know, but still, you know, I think we need the the extra space, and I think it's coming before the Long Range Planning Subcommittee next week or two weeks from now, whenever we're meeting, so thank you.
Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Talk about walking across the street. At the old high school, the old armory was pretty much across the street. However, it was also a much safer place to cross than where the existing armory is also across the street from the current Taunton High School, but the wide and fast Gordon Owen Riverways are a little bit difficult to, we'd probably have to put in some kind of special lights and crosswalk and everything else if that's going to be used on a regular basis. It is, it is an idea. I don't know how extensive the National Guard's use of this armory is, and certainly, we go along very well in in the old one. But again, it was it was easier to access than this is, so we'd have to take some other steps besides just acquiring the use.
It was just a thought, because just to add, put another building addition on, and the cost of it would be absolutely phenomenal at this time. Okay, moving on, Mr. Cabral would like to speak about the strategic planning process.
Before you leave the action plans, may I?
This is still, this is still in action.
We're still on action, Mrs. Doherty. Mr. Cabral?
Oh, Mrs. Fagan.
Oh, I, well, did we already do new business?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I want to ask a question. Could you just tell us the dates again for the blood drives?
Oh, I don't have.
We're not to that point yet. We're just still on this strategic. I'll address that after. Go ahead, Mr. Cabral.
Sorry, so just real quick, there is an action item dated two thirteen eighteen, strategic planning process. So I provided in your packet a colorful document. I just want to let you know that the strategic plan process has already begun. So on June twentieth, the all-admin team met and conducted a SWAP. So I want to thank the board members who reminded me to spell out the acronyms. So a SWAP is an exercise in which administrators, staff, stakeholders will identify the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats facing the Taunton Public Schools. So on June twentieth, that exercise was conducted by the all-admin team. During our retreat, we analyzed the SWAP and whittled down, took the results starting up here and brought them down to a more manageable task. So part of my process or part of the work will be to meet, to have our teachers provide input, to have parents provide input, to have stakeholders and business leaders provide input, as well as the school board. And during these meetings, which I will have finalized dates, I will email the dates to you. So in the event you cannot, in the event you'd like to attend additional meetings to see the work that's taking place with parents and stakeholders, you're more than welcome to attend as an observer or as a participant, depending on how you wish to participate that evening. But this is the process, and we're hoping by the end of, I'm shooting for May to, I'm looking to April fifteenth to unveil our Torch two point O, which we are calling the Evolution of the Torch that Dr. Hackett presented eleven years ago. And again, we have a great strategic plan, it just needs to be updated, and we're going to have a, you know, full participation, stakeholders, parents, teachers, school committee members, to make sure that we have a strategic plan that works for Taunton that can be utilized moving forward for the next ten years.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Okay, Mrs. Fagan, you had a question.
I'll take it up.
I'm sorry?
I'll take it up with the map.
Okay. Anybody else have anything on unfinished business?
Nope.
Mrs. Doherty?
So I note that on our action plan documents, so this is designed to remind us of what we've done, and according to the title, approved motions and requests. Not everything that we ask for requires a motion, so there are several things that have not found their way onto this list that have been asked for over time. One is a report of the grants, grants that we are in, that are supporting programs throughout the district, what the grant is, how much it is, what its expiration date is, what the sustainability is, and that was triggered by the loss of the grant at Parker School. So that's the first thing. The second thing, most recently at the last meeting, was to revisit the presentation of the school improvement plans. We don't want that to get lost because the clock is ticking. There may be change, there may be no change, but it should find its way on this list, though, that we're reminded that it should happen. Another is the curriculum audit. I understand that there was a curriculum audit that was done in March. This came up, I don't know how many meetings ago, and Mr. Cabral, thank you, you said that we would be receiving that report, and so we should get that reported sometime soon. And I'm thinking about all these things that feed themselves into the strategic planning process. That information is invaluable. And the last thing is the special education, Department of Education Special Education Report, where the Special Education Department personnel came and they gave us an interim report, and we are promised that we will have a final report and the disposition of some of the items that we need to address sometime near the end of the year, I suppose. So I think that I'd like to have those items on this action planning document so that it reminds us that that's what we're heading toward. Thank you, Mrs. Almeida.
So if I could just comment real quick, so I apologize, because the quarterly update, well, we have a quarterly report that we present a financing law on budget and revolving, and we've started incorporating the grants into that report as well, so I was just going to build that into the quarterly report that we provide at the financing law, which we've done before.
I'd like to see a spreadsheet of all the grants.
That's what we, that's what we do.
So you're saying it goes to financing law?
As part of our quarterly financial reporting, so I apologize. It can be done either way. I, but I figured you'd want to see it more, more frequently throughout the course of the year. So the curriculum audit, Mr. Barado and I are still digesting that document. It's, it's very comprehensive, so we want to make sure that we understand the document before we present it, so what we do have, you are correct.
So what are you thinking about in terms of?
It'll probably dovetail or come shortly after the MCAS presentation.
Okay, so.
Yeah, again, it was, it's very comprehensive, a lot of rich information that's going to, that's going to drive a lot of the work we do moving forward. And actually, it ties very well, based on my initial analysis, it ties very well into the feedback we received by, was it Schoolworks, Mr. Barado? A lot of the information contained in the audit report, we were notified or was brought to our attention through the site visits by Schoolworks during the instructional, the formation, the instructional leadership teams. The improvement plans, I have spoken with my principals about it at our first principals' meeting. The topic was brought up. I gave them the history of how the plans have been presented. I gave them a week to digest and think about how it would look moving forward. Unfortunately, this last meeting was canceled because we had several principals and central office staff extending professional development, so I will be collecting that information at our October tenth meeting, so I should have an update there. And then I will check with Mrs. Mulrooney and her team to see where we are with our responses to the, what was, to the, to the audit, so to speak, that was conducted. I want to make sure that they've done their work and received the feedback as well.
I do believe that Mrs. Mulrooney, when her and Mrs. Perry presented it, they said they were going to come back to the committee when they finished everything.
Yeah, because.
They're probably not finished, and that's why they didn't come back to us.
Thank you for refreshing my memory, because certain pieces were due at different dates. There were pieces due in August, and I think pieces due in October.
And they wanted to wait, and they gave us a timeline at that time and said they'd be back when everything was completed, so. Okay.